...forum I will call the meeting to order, the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping and Mr. Gant has also requested a video recording. There may not be an attendance sheet. Do you be kind enough to be our attendance sheet person? Our first item is a further discussion of the sign by law. At this point, I won't even say enforcement attempts, I'll say public education attempts. And Glenn, our enforcement officer is kind enough to be here. I think the main point is to coordinate between the board of selectmen in terms of where we go from here and next steps, is that correct? Mr. Gant, you've been predominantly the person taking care of this, do you want to get the conversation going?
Perhaps a good review then of where we are. We have had a letter prepared and sent out to essentially 130 or so of the primary businesses in town. There is a letter to the editor that was published about two weeks ago in the local newspaper by the Board of Selectmen referencing what was going on with this. And Glenn, and we've gotten some feedback from some businesses about questions that they may have, whether their signs are correct, et cetera. And Glenn now has had a chance to take that information and go ahead and hopefully spend some time with the ones who have questions and those that are known to be have violations.
Absolutely, we've received a few phone calls. Most of the phone calls though have come from people that are already in compliance. They've either received a special permit from the Board of Selectmen or they've received a golden permit to a record sign.
Just how many did we actually get? I mentioned two that I know of, emails that came into us.
I'm just gonna check, but there was one email from the owners of Leilas.
That's the most recent.
You remember that one?
Yes, and I've talked to them, she also called, Frank Martino called.
Okay, so you've got calls versus emails? And that's what you're following up on in those cases?
That's probably like six maybe that came in.
I'm gonna say probably a maximum, probably a maximum of six. The ones that, there are a few that know they're in violation and they're not going to, they're not going to contact us, so, and that's one of the things that once you're done and you want to get into what I propose for enforcement on it, then I want to talk about that a little bit. You know, how we want to handle it.
Yeah, so that's kind of the background of where we are and that we're really at this point now of what's the process going forward. You're the one who can make the decisions, not any of us of course.
So in my opinion, in order to get compliance with the sign by law, you sent a letter out and that was the nice notification. And now, if you want it taken care of, it's gonna need to be a notice of violation and then, you know, 72 hours. What I propose to give people is 72 hours to comply. If they don't, then the next thing they get is the initial $25 fine. And then the next day, they get a $50 fine. And the next day, they get a $100 fine. And the next day, and every day after that, that they're not in compliance, they get a $200 fine. That's what the by law says, that's what the by law allows. Sometimes you have to be a little bit forceful to get compliance with this stuff. This is the process we went through, the exact same finding process and find structure that we went through with Hydrant Regency and Kennel. So, you know, obviously the signs are to a lesser degree of violation, so to speak, but they're still a violation.
How specific is the first notice that says you're in violation? Does it describe how they're in violation?
Oh absolutely, absolutely. And what I will do is take a cellphone picture of the sign and I will attach that to the letter. So they'll be able to actually see the sign that is in violation. We have a few downtown, ABT Yoga, Curves, Daybreak Cafe, The Studio. There's a guy that has a landscaping sign out that's there pretty consistently. And Leilas, I asked them to shut off the, I went in and asked them in person to please shut off the,
Keynote?
Yeah, the lighted Mega Bucks Mass Millions keynote signs. And she did it immediately while I was there. I've been over to the Country Farm Store and asked them twice and they just kind of, and they don't do anything with it, so.
How about the open signs Glenn that have the dots around them that are blinking? I didn't think the blinking was allowed, I thought it was a solid.
It's solid but not blinking.
Yeah, those are programmable.
They can just flick a switch.
Yeah, they can flick a switch and change the.
I know we have a couple of those, three of them I can think of.
So that's something else that I'll look into and just tell them to, I hadn't thought of that to be honest with you.
Then I have two questions, I'll ask them sort of back around. 72 hours, I don't know if there are any sort of stalled signs where 72 hours might be kind of a short period of time if they have, you know, two signs that collectively exceed the total size and number and so forth. I think the Country Farm Store is in that category. I could see maybe taking more than 72 hours for them to get that removed.
You mean the sign over the store?
Yeah, I think they're allowed to have one, isn't it of a certain size?
Well, they're allowed to have one attached and one detached.
Okay, so they have two attached, but they didn't have two attached to the structure. And I don't know where the situation is. I started chasing down an old abandoned sign post there and that's still there. I mean, that would take more than 72 hours.
Well, that one, I think, boy, do you have agreement with.
I've had several conversations with them about that sign. Well, let me finish. The owner of that place is usually not there, they're Indians.
That's what I found so far.
The guy that I talked to that is, I believe is the son of the owner. His name is Max, he goes by the name Max. I've talked to him about it, he's talked to the owner of the property and I've been in there two or three times. And every time I go now, I get the story about the fact that they're gonna repave the parking lot next door and when they do that, they're gonna take the sign down. I don't have a date out of them, but it's supposed to be this summer, okay? That's the story that I know and about all you can do is keep the pressure on.
That sign, that pole that you're talking about, boy, is that one?
Yeah, I'm talking about the abandoned sign.
The abandoned one, is that in violation then?
Yes, that's, I guess in one respect, depends on how you look at it, I guess. Because it's no longer a sign, it has nothing on it, so it's not an abandoned sign.
But it was erected to be a sign.
But it's not an abandoned sign.
And they did make an application to put a new sign on it.
They did.
Which we refused.
Right.
Because it was not in compliance.
Right.
So I'm hesitant to say, okay, it's not a sign and it's out of our thing because to me, that was a sign, it was always intended to be a sign.
It's a sign pole.
It's a sign pole, I'll have to look in the zoning by law and see what it says about sign poles. But in my opinion, all right, right now, it's not a sign. I'll have to look and see what it says about, we might be able to do something about it being an abandoned structure, something on that idea. But I would hesitate to say abandoned sign, unless I put abandoned sign support structure or something like that.
Because, you know, we just recently approved a gas station sign out on Route 1.
This is at Route 1?
And one of the conditions was that the two poles be removed. Now, they're not a sign per se, but you could have hung a sign between them. And we made that part of the authorization for them to put up a new sign that those poles come down. So there are poles for a sign and that is tied into our authorization.
And that's fine because you had dealings with it at the time. I think that maybe when they applied for the special permit to put the sign on that existing pole, you know, maybe if something was done at that time, it would have been beneficial. But I'll look into it anyway, I'm looking to see if there's something we can do. I still don't know what to, if they can't do it until the parking lot is paved, then I guess they can't do it until a parking lot is paved. What happens is I will issue a notice of violation. I can give them, somebody here give me what they think is an appropriate time. 60 days, summer's over.
Thirty, I mean, I just, they could cut it down.
Okay, so if I give them 30 days. If it's not done, 30 days after that, then it goes to you guys.
That's right. Glenn, what I'm reading here is legally existing prior non-conforming signs, which is what that came under. They could be used until they're not used and then it says, no such sign can be replaced with a new non-conforming sign, which is the basis that we did not allow their suggested redo. No sign may be removed or replaced by new non-conforming, that's what we didn't do. It says, any such signs have been destroyed or damaged to such an extent that the cost of restoration would exceed one-third of the replacement value of the sign at the time of the destruction or damage, shall not be repaired, rebuilt, or altered unless it is conforming to this article. And it says, any such sign on an abandoned establishment, and we talk about, at the end it says, it shall be considered abandoned. Now, I appreciate you taking a look at it and reading it with your eyes too, but I think it's pretty clearly, having started life as a sign, it is now by this definition abandoned sign. So that's the most egregious thing downtown to unpersonalize.
And just something to think about, you know, much, much more than I do on interpreting this, is that they did approach this board to some degree possibly acknowledging it is a sign, we have an application.
We have that application.
And I would 100% agree. I would not have any issue with it at all if their old sign was still up there. But it's not, they took it down, they ordered a new sign, the new sign is out behind the building that was designed to go up there, all right? So, but I will look into it rather than try to debate whether it is or it isn't here, I will look into it.
And after you look into it and come back, if it helps you, you know, perhaps this board will consider, to the extent we can determining it in our view to be a sign, then maybe you can review that.
But ultimately, and I don't mean this with any disrespect at all, ultimately, it's my opinion as to what it is and what will happen is, I'll give them 30 days. If they haven't taken it down in 30 days, then I'm going to come to you and then we get town council involved, that's the process.
I'm okay with that.
I think if they've already agreed to take it down, they just said the timing was delayed because of the tar.
They have agreed to take it down.
So they're planning to take it down.
So how much do we want to poke them?
Well, I think we want to confirm their intent.
So we can send them something and writing, asking them to confirm their intent to remove that sign and ask for a timeframe. Ask for a timeframe.
Yeah, that's right.
And if for some reason, let's just say that for whatever reason they can't tar until much later, is that expensive for the town to take down and then fill in with tar for the hole?
Well, it's private property.
But they allow us to because they said their intention was to take the town.
There's a concrete sort of shielding on the bottoms of cars, can't hit a metal pipe. But you could be cut off with a pipe cutter at three and a half feet above and fill in with sand and a concrete cap. And for the purposes of removing the sign, that would take care of it. They would have no more or less of an issue, maybe a little less than an issue when it came to redoing the parking lot. But I fear those who, for instance, complain about, gee, Mr. Plonk's got to put handicap parking lines laid out on the parking lot. Well, I'll do it as soon as I can, hey, I'm just not buying this, when I get to this, then I'll do that.
Well, that's why I'm raising it, because if they've agreed to take it down, then similar to what we offered Mr. Plonk, we can help you take it down. We took down the other sign or pole that was up there.
Well, that was a lot easier than this one.
It was easier, but we did it, we got permission from them and the town took it down.
And the original proposal to me was the fact that we don't have a problem with you guys taking it down if you'd like to take it down, I said, no, we don't do that on private property and we're not gonna stand.
I think that's a risky thing to go down and get it wrong.
Very risky to, very risky.
Yeah, right, you're absolutely right.
I think the letter asking about timing is perfect and.
And the other thing is, I mean, if they cut that off and take the top part off and so now you have a concrete tube sticking out of the ground with a piece of metal sticking out of it. Well, I'm not sure that that's gonna look a lot prettier than that than what's there.
Well, the one above the roof line to me, we've agreed is something you're gonna look into.
I will look at it.
The other question that I had then is, you talked about after a notice of violation, is that a notice of violation? When you say that, is that something you're expecting to receive and then you'll act? Or is that something you will act upon and send?
Oh, I'm going to initiate it. I'm going to initiate the notice of violation. I have a list, I have a list of the ones downtown and I drove through there again this morning to confirm that they're there. I actually did a letter for the gas station out on 97. So, you know, that one's gonna be sent out and it's ordering that they bring their property into compliance within 72 hours. So, you know, that's a matter of going up and pulling these flags out of the ground and stuff.
You've got a bunch of work to do out there.
That's half day work for them.
In terms of process, so let's say you sent a letter out to one of these folks and said, you have to do ABC in 72 hours. And they responded, and I use the words of good faith, and said, we'll do it, but it's gonna take whatever. Do you have the ability to allow that?
I absolutely do, I absolutely do. I'll work with them, because the idea here is compliance, it's not punishing people, it's not inconveniencing people or anything else. Businesses still have to operate, you know, so. The objective here, the end result we want is compliance with the sign by law.
Glenn, are most of them, when I'm trying to think of the flags at the gas station or the signs you just pull up out of the ground, 72 hours should be absolutely no problem.
Right.
And the ones that everybody's complaining about, you just pick them up and take them inside?
When I send, anytime I've ever, in the 23 or 24 years I've been doing this, I've ever sent out a zoning violation notice, they have a right to appeal. One of the good things about my job and one of the bad things about my job is, every decision I make, the good thing is, every decision I make can be appealed to somebody. The bad thing about it is, every decision I make can be appealed to somebody.
So the appellate board is the select?
The zoning board. No, the zoning board for signs, because it's the, well, a selectmen is simply the special permit granting authority for signs.
Okay, so it would be the ZBA?
Yeah, so it would be the ZBA to do it. I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate any action on that front though, I really don't.
Do we have bylaws Glenn about all the signs within windows? Some of our businesses are just plastered with things.
Yeah, a certain amount of coverage is allowed, it's 20% or something like that.
Okay, so a number of these are way beyond 20%?
Yeah.
And so they would be included?
I can include them, I realize that, you know, they're in the front of the store and stuff like that. But I know what the by law says, I just think it's tough to try to enforce things within their store. But you guys tell me that, so you want me to do that?
Well, is it in our by law?
Well, if it's plastered on the window, it is.
Yeah.
The question is what's on the window.
And actually in the by law, it says, as far as illuminated signs, in particular, it says that if it's, basically anything that's designed to be seen, like if you're walking past a business and you look in the window, anything that you can see that can be considered a sign. But I don't know that, I don't know how practical that is to even try to enforce. And a perfect example of that is Alex's, where you can walk by on the sidewalk and see their menu inside the store, all right? At what point do you, what point do you not do that? You know what I mean? At what point do you, how far do you want to go with it? And I'll leave that up to this board, I mean, I'll get as tough on this as you want me to get, all right? And again, with no disrespect, I just don't, I just don't want to hear about it when people come crying to the board of selectmen.
My opinion is that, as you said, this is an effort to try to clean it up, not to incriminate.
The biggest ones, the biggest offenders are the flags on the gas station, the Daybreak Cafe signs that are stuck in the ground, the Studio sign that's stuck in the ground, the Curves signs that are stuck in the ground scattered throughout the town. And like the ABT Yoga, they can have a sandwich board signs, but I think they can't be out, if I'm not mistaken, they can't be out, you know, when they're not, yeah, 14 days.
And not when they're not in business. That goes to the Mercedes sign out on Route 1, that goes for the sign that's in front of the pizza shop most of the time.
And what is the ruling for the A frames?
For the A frames?
It's 14 days total. And up to 30 days total per year. And it must be out when the business is open, but not when it's not.
Okay, so the key there is no more than 30 days because this is year round?
There's a couple areas of the by law that I think need to be addressed. And that's one of them. You know, I don't think it, I don't think it, what makes a difference if it's out there for two days a week or five days a week? If they're not, as long as it's not out there when they're not open. The other thing is like the lottery signs, the numbers illuminated. They're not blinking, they're not flashing, they're just illuminated. I think that's something that, you know, the planning board needs to look at and I will be recommending to them that they do look at that for the next front amendment to the zoning by law. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, regarding that, one of the things that's happening as part of the strategic planning process is merchants seem to be coming together in a way that maybe they hadn't been so organized before. And it may be appropriate as that overall process goes to engage them directly because they want to have the downtown look nice, but if they say, these are really necessary for our business, I think they, as advisors if you will, working with the planning board, can come up with something. But I agree with you that it should be open for review and there may be some changes that are necessary, so.
Yeah, those are a couple that I can see that, you know, I, you take businesses that are, like in the shopping center down there, and it would be nice if the owner of the shopping center would get a nice sign out front and with the businesses listed on it and that type of thing. That could help a lot. But it's tough being stuck in the back when people are driving on Main Street and there's no advertisement, there's no way of knowing that they're out back unless they drive into the parking lot. And typically, just if you're just driving through a town, if you're looking for something, you're not gonna drive through every parking lot, you know? And I'm sure that that's why Daybreak Curves, The Studio, and that's why they put them out there. Those signs, I believe in the by law, not to double check it, but I believe we also have the right to just go collect those signs, all right? I hesitate to do that, that's private property. You know, I really hesitate to do that, I would be really upset if somebody did that to me.
If they're on public property, that's a different story. They're in an invalid spot, whatever they are, that's a different story. But on their own private property, I think you're absolutely right, I need to be very careful on that. Can I just speak for a second on this, only 14 days, whatever? The concept here is that businesses do have special occasions and they would like to, and people would like to know that something special is going on. And so the idea is that they have up to 14 days for any one event and a total of 30 days over time. So they could do four one-week advertisements of the spring opening, the fall opening, the winter closing, whatever it is. I mean, that's the concept behind it. Doesn't mean that we can't change those things, but that is the basic concept. The challenge becomes that it's for a limited period of time. Well, what happens when it stays out there for a longer period of time? How do you go ahead and measure that at some point? It's up to them in a sense to measure. If they're in violation, it's up to essentially us to measure or to have Glenn measure that it's been out there for more than that time. But that's the concept though. But we want to be open to businesses and having something new and different, that would be, sure, big sale, right on, put it there. But don't have the sale every day for six, five days of the year. That's egregious to doing it. There's that mix between having signage that brings in business and signage that affects the town in a negative way. So you want to have a reasonable mix that people can have the signs. I very much agree with the fact that with people in the business village, it would be very nice to have that single sign with these of the businesses within it. But that's up to those businesses and the owner, whatever else, to decide if they want to do something like that.
I do know that's something that Kelly was working on, was talking to and had many conversations with Peter Plonk about, was doing that sign for the front.
And Kelly and I are now in discussion with Peter about a number of things with the revitalization. So again, it's something that we can bring up and discuss and say that.
Change those things to those things and put the things in.
Having the signs come out of the ground, if the people know that, the businesses know they can't be in there, they will start to call Peter more, there will be more requests and a little more pressure to put up a sign if they can't have any signage out front, so.
Yeah, because it actually, I mean, if that sign brings, you know, two customers a week into their business, and I don't think that they would have them out there if they weren't effective. I don't think, maybe they would.
They oftentimes were not, when the businesses were fairly new, because there has been some turnover. And I think it's inertia that's kind of kept them there occasionally, the ones get bent at different places. But it's going to be interesting to see, and I think it's a guess entirely at this point, but with the landlord's biggest tenant leaving, it's gonna change the calculus on that whole place. And I think if he's looking for other tenants, if we basically are saying, no, you can't put a sign out there on your own, it may affect his ability to attract tenants if he can't have the ability, hasn't got the ability to advertise that they're in there. He has potentially some incentive there among many of the possibilities, but I agree on that.
Glenn, how does it work with telephone poles? I drive around and I see people have stapled things to the telephone poles. Can you just take those down because it's on public property? Because how do you know who they are other than calling the number and they could be anywhere?
Yeah, they can be taken, they're not supposed to, it violates the women grid, I mean, national grid. And, you know, it violates everything, it violates the by law, it violates their regulations, violates everything, so.
But I don't think they're gonna take down Missing Kitty.
No, these are professional signs, you can tell that someone had these actually made.
We had a bunch of those on Route 1 during a fair one year and it was about people hiring welders and that type of thing, about fabricators. And I called them and told them to get rid of them. And they were gone either that afternoon or the next morning.
How does it work with, and now this is getting to private property again, but maybe we can talk with the business and ensure that they take care of it. But I know when it was election time at Dunkin' Donuts, I went to them to ask if I could put my signs out. And then like all the signs went out, it was like massive. And I'm not sure if each one talked to Dunkin', not so much for the election, but like going forward, I see signs pop out there, we're hiring kids, schools put them out there.
I've watched people pull up, not even pull into their parking lot, pull up on Route 1 right at the light, get out, and put a sign down and go, I've seen that twice.
Right, and it was really messy at that intersection. And I'm not sure that the manager in Dunkin' Donuts is paying any attention to that, they don't care.
Sort of the edge of the parking lot.
But if we reached out to say, it matters to the town and how it looks and are you all right with us pulling these down? Or would you go up and pull them down? Or have some dialogue because it gets, there's always something stuck.
Their responsibility, it's their property, it's their responsibility if the signs are up there.
The guy that owns that is, they're not separate, I believe, he lives in Hamilton. He owns several, so we can send him, you know, we can send him a letter.
Yeah, I think he would take care of it if we just did more of it.
Yeah, he would, I've known him for 24, 25 years, so he's a really good guy.
I'd just like to say a few words. I'm not gonna interpret the sign by law. We have a sign by law. You know what that sign by law says and you're agreeing to enforce that sign by law. I'm gonna leave that up to you. You're a reasonable guy, you already said that you're not interested in incriminating people and getting rid of the signs and cleaning it up. I'm gonna leave that to you. I went down the other day and got some of your business cards and somebody says something to me about the sign by law, I'm gonna give one of your business cards and say, call Glenn, okay? I've got a list of two or three people that I know of that have come to me. I've got a list of two or three people that I know of that have come to me and, and asked me about interpreting the sign by law, and I'm gonna give you a copy of that list of those people. And beyond that, excuse me, folks, but we could sit here and jumble about this thing all night.
We can start going now. I appreciate the fact that you are prepared to start sending notices of violation, and I, I really appreciate that. I also think it's very important that on these things where we've identified the issue that requiring the citizens file for each one, that you're undertaking downtown as, and the gas stations kind of a target area, so I appreciate that, thank you.
And, and I just wanna say, as far as, you know, you were, your comment about the Sandwich Board signs, that if in fact their intention was for special events and that type of thing, then that's obviously not what the, the pizza shop and ABT Yoga and those places are doing. So I, so it's kind of, it was two different purposes then, is what those signs, the Planning Board in their recognition of the signs maybe had one thing in mind, and people are using them for something else, they're using them for daily advertising, like, you know, specials at the pizza shop, or, I don't think Alex has one, but, you know, the ABT Yoga, you know, that type of thing. So I think there's, there's, I think the intent, maybe the intent of the Planning Board was different than, than what they're being used for.
It was paper, okay.
So, but it's, again, it's one of those things that I, I think that is an area of the bylaw that needs to be, that needs to be looked at to allow the Sandwich Board signs while they're open. But they can't block a sidewalk, they can't, you know, they can't, you know, it makes me absolutely insane when I see Sandwich Board signs on a sidewalk where there's handicapped accessibility and they're blocking the accessibility, that makes me crazy.
So as we go along, you have the plan to get this, in a sense, started with the businesses. What I'm interested in is essentially the momentum. Other businesses will look at what, this business will look at that's going on and who's doing what. So we appreciate the fact that you're gonna do this and get it going, but, but any way that we can help you with the momentum is important, because if, it's, I think the hardest way to do it would be to do one, and then three weeks later another one, and three weeks later another one, because the momentum would get lost.
Part of the.
So, let me just finish. And one of the things that could help us, by the way, with the momentum, and that is the Chronicle and Transcript, Wendell Waters has come to me and I passed it on to Glenn, is apparently interested in doing the article that we, I had talked with her about a number of months ago. And so I think that will add to somewhat the momentum, people understanding, people understanding, and the businesses understanding. And there's nothing like for a business to have a patron come in and say, hey, how come you still have that sign out there? Isn't the town doing something? I mean, then it's off the hook, and, because people are saying it, it's, it's the, the way in which people essentially police themselves based on public input.
So, that, that being said, I'm never going to be off the hook with us, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. What I need more than anything is for when people start calling the board saying, this guy gave me seventy-two hours to take this sign down, this guy only gave me, you know, he's making me take my signs down, I can't, I can't run my business because I have to have signage up, you guys back me. You guys, you know.
Could you say something?
Yeah.
It's town by law?
Yes.
Town people voted it?
Yeah.
I don't think it's up to the board to.
It's not.
Make that decision. I would also suggest that you put in here something about what the penalties are for failure to comply.
I, yeah, I can.
I think we leave it up to him to get the first thing started.
Oh, I, I think the penalties would be key, because if they see fifty, a hundred, two hundred every day, they're gonna think twice about just throwing that letter out.
Yeah, that's what, I think you should add the penalties in there.
Sure.
No, the threatening way, but failure to comply with zoning or.
Right, may, may result in penalties of.
Such as?
And, and, based from the zoning by law.
Yeah, but I think having penalties in there is really important, because people vote often with their pocketbooks, so they act based on their.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, and I usually put that in there, but sometimes we, sometimes we wanna be.
I know, but they should know, they should know.
I know, but sometimes they wanna be kind and gentle, and other times they want me to stomp on them, so.
Well, this isn't stomping.
This is the second letter, the first one was kind and gentle, and it was a reminder to everybody.
Exactly, and now it's time to.
There's a nice way to say, and by the way.
To avoid penalties, you know, not so much we're gonna hit you with, but, you know, compliance will.
It had attention, and the reality is we'll get around pretty quickly if we are serious about this. I think once you get the first, and including a couple of the toughies in compliance, the board's gonna get out, we're doing something.
And, and what I'm going to do, Dick, in reference to another thing that you said with, there's going to be, all of the ones downtown, ABT, Country Farm, Daybreak, Caves, the Studio, all of those will be going out the same day, all right?
That's kind of great.
And the blinking lights.
That's great.
Anything that's in violation goes out right in that same area.
Yeah, so it's just gonna, it's just gonna take that much longer, because I have to get on there again and, and look at all of that stuff. Because every one of these needs a, they make, there's three or four of them that are the same violation, but then you get ones that are different violations, so the letter has to read different.
Right. I think your idea of taking the pictures and, and, you know, accompanying that with the letter is excellent, because then there's no question as to what they're being asked to.
Right.
Correct.
Right, I agree.
Can I just ask you a question? The letters that went out, were they just for the downtown district? That's what I.
No.
Downtown, was it also Route One?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so one of the things that we had talked about early on is taking a look at the bylaws and seeing if they needed to be changed relative to a sign that was in our downtown, our cozy downtown where people are walking, versus Route One where something might need to be larger, to be set back and seen as people are, are driving quickly by and all. And that, we didn't discuss at all, but is that something that would go to the Planning Board to look at?
Existing, existing bylaw does have different rules for different zones.
Yeah.
Already, clearly, there's different, different rules.
But we had talked a little bit about looking at those, we didn't look at them at all. Does anything need to go to the Planning Board then to look at, besides a couple of things that you mentioned, Glenn? Are there any other issues that pertain to either area?
I haven't been through to look for other issues, these are things that are coming up as we're, you know, as we're, we're going through this stuff. But it would go to the Planning Board, and, and you kind of wanna try to involve somebody from the Planning Board in the discussions on it, because otherwise, because if they're not behind it, you just spin any wheels, so.
And I know that, I know that Martha, his favorite part of any zoning for her is signs.
The signs.
And I realize it's tough. One of the things that I think is worth considering, and I'm not saying absolutely we should do it, but getting some of the potential offenders to help set the guidelines, because I don't think they're gonna ask for things that are unreasonable. And guess what, ultimately, they'll say, no, that's too much, we're not gonna do that. But I think that, you know, engaging, how long, maybe we should keep Sandwich Boards out a little longer, but you have to ring them every night. Maybe there should be a limit on the size, all these things can be worked out by.
The Revitalization Committee for Downtown, hopefully they can, and they, they do, and they solicit all of the businesses down there to their meeting, because the more the businesses downtown that you have in that, on that committee or are involved in that committee, the easier it's going to be, and the better it's going to look ultimately.
I agree.
We actually have a Business Roundtable that we'll be holding in August, where the business owners, like Lux is on the committee, Alex is on the committee, et cetera.
Every business.
They're going to solicit all the businesses to come to this roundtable to discuss a number of issues that impact them, and you're right, Glenn, signage would be.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna be.
A key one.
And again, I mean, well, like, you know, you talked about different signs for, you know, different sizes allowed for different areas. Where the, the shopping center is, is set out back, they can have larger signs than, than you can out at the street. You know, there's, there's sightline distances and that type of thing that, that the bylaw are always allowed.
One of the key things that we did fix in the bylaw, citizens fixed, so to speak, at the town meeting a year plus ago, was to allow the lighted open signs, because that was one that existed in many of the businesses. It was invalid, so it had to come down, but it was illogical to have them come down because it absolutely represented, not only for the business to tell people they're open, but for people to understand that they were open. So that particular fix, I think, was one of the key ones that allowed us to go forward and then try to begin to work with the sign by law, because before that, the sign by law was so out of place by not having that one item, and we got that, and I think that's made it much easier to go ahead and enforce the remaining ones.
And those signs became very popular, and you can buy them for fifty bucks at Home Depot or those.
And again, a public service to tell somebody you're open, if they're passing by, they don't get out of their car, or, oh, you're closed. So it was a public service, worked out well.
Is there anything further from members on this topic?
Glenn, do you know which, off the top of your head, which ones have the blinking open signs as you'd feel like?
I think Country Farms, I think Leila's does, and there was one other that I saw.
Daybreak's got one with a coffee cup on it, and it flashes.
Yes.
So let's start with that, that, my understanding is from the industry that four seconds, after four seconds is not a blinking sign. So you can't have, for example, maybe a message, or if you're gonna update, you have a clock that's gonna update, so they can have a changing sign.
No, what they have is, is a series of dots around it, each one blinks, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, it's constantly going.
That's a blinking sign, clearly. I just beg for, for our own thinking, that it's, it's possible to have something that changes, but when it changes.
Dick, the current, the current law.
Four seconds, then it's kind of considered to be blinking.
Dick, the current law says no sign shall be lighted except by a white, continuous, stationary light.
Except if you look at the open sign.
That is one that.
Internally lighted.
But that's not blinking, and it's not.
That's right, there, there's no blinking.
It's not white, that's not, but, just so the saying.
Oh, but here's, here's a case where there have been special permits, two of them that I can think of, that need to be careful. That is the fairgrounds and the co-op. And so they have messages that could be blinking, they could change them. So that's a case where, yes, it's not directly in the bylaw, but the Board of Selectmen has approved, at least in one case, a, a special permit that allowed for an internally lighted, lettered sign, and you gotta be careful, but it does blink.
They, I think with the, with the fairground sign, if I'm not mistaken, they specified how many, how many changes that could do.
Oh.
How often.
Oh, it's all right, then I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's, I can't remember what it is specifically, but I think it was specified how often that could change.
Great, great, okay.
And that would certainly be.
That's in the special program.
That would certainly be something for the, for the, for the board to look at when they're issuing a special program.
Yep.
Anything further from the members? Anything else you should tell us in the moment?
Yeah, kind of, kind of a biggie. I, I'm trying to retire, and, and I, I would like to do it at the end of the year, but I don't wanna leave Topsfield. That, but what that means is that I would have to reduce my hours to eighteen. Benefit to Topsfield is, I, I've been doing Topsfield and West Newbury for twenty-some odd years, and I would give up West Newbury and, and come here. Typically now, I have office hours on Tuesday and Thursday morning. I would propose to do Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings from seven to twelve, with inspections being done between seven and eight, and then after twelve. So that'll pretty much eat up the eighteen hours. Basically, you wouldn't notice any difference. I mean, I, I really like working here, I will do what, the same thing I've always done, I will do whatever it takes to do the job, but I just won't be able to be paid for more than eighteen hours a week, that's what it would.
So you give us all the same work and we pay you less? Hmm.
The, yeah, I mean, yes.
I'm not gonna wrong that, no. I'm gonna have to think on this one.
I did, you know, I, I did kind of put together a thing here, and so from thirty to eight, thirty hours a week to eighteen, and it does give, it gives me more availability for Topsfield because I don't have to leave here and go to West Newbury, and I don't have to leave West Newbury and come here on, on the days that aren't my office hours here. So I would just be able to concentrate on one town. The, obviously that means that it's a non-benefited position, so, you know, the town, when I checked into this, the town would save, what would they save? You got it right here. The town alone on that would save about seventeen thousand eight hundred bucks a year, you know, and then.
Is it the hourly or the benefits? What does the seventeen eight represent?
That's the, just the health, the health benefits.
The health.
Yeah. Because I'm an old guy now, and I can, I don't have to go up, so. So, the, I talked about the proposed hours. There is, oh, and just so, just so you know, all right, I'm gonna do this for us. The eighteen hours at my current rate, which is forty-two, fifty-three an hour, comes out to seven sixty-five, fifty-four. At the thirty hours that I'm doing now, it's twelve hundred and seventy-six dollars. So the town would gain five hundred and ten bucks a week there, all right? I would, we really need to get more hours for Diane. We need to be able to have her here in the afternoons. I would like to be able to take some of those hours and, and some of that monetary gain that the, that the town would get and, and give some of it to Diane. She's here from seven to one, Monday through Thursday. You know, I'd like to get like another, I'd like to see that position at thirty-four to thirty-six hours a week. Thirty-four is, thirty-four is fine, I think it would be, it would be all right. Right now, what happens is Sue Winslow and Heidi Gaffney are there in the afternoons. So when people come in for something from the Inspection Services Department, they have to interrupt what they're doing to get up and walk over to the counter and talk to them and find out what it is they need. They, they're incredibly helpful, so they take all of the information and, and then leave it for Diane, or they text Diane, or they text me if it's something that needs to be addressed immediately. But like Sue Winslow is, she's the admin for the Board of Health and for the Conservation Commission. She also does the trash stuff, and she does the website. I don't think it's fair to ask her to interrupt her afternoon constantly to, you know, and it's not, it's not like one or two people come in in the afternoon, it's, it's, some days it's, you know, six, eight, ten people come in there in the afternoon, because they know somebody's there now, all right? Wasn't so much like that before, but, you know, we're, we're downstairs now, they know that there's somebody there that they can talk to, so, you know, we're, we're seeing more traffic come in. I would just like to see, I would like to, really like to see more hours. The work is there to support it, for sure. I mean, we will, we should hit a thousand permits in this fiscal year. Last year we did, we did close, we did about nine hundred last year, and I, and I see it, you know, there's, there's been an uptick in the, in the permits, so.
Just to clarify, right now it's twenty-four, twenty-four hours.
Per position.
Six hours for four days is twenty-four?
Yes, right.
And you're looking at thirty, thirty-four to thirty-six, that would be four days of eight hours, plus Friday for two or four hours.
Well, if you did, if you did four days for, for eight hours, I would give a thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
You know?
You said thirty-four to thirty-six, that's why I was trying to.
Did I say, I'm, I'm sorry, I meant, I meant thirty-two to thirty-four.
Thirty-two, got it, okay.
Thirty-two to thirty-four, yeah. Okay. Okay, I said 34 to 36, but, I mean, even 32 would, you know... We just need her there. I want her there when the store is open, so to speak. You know what I mean? When that window's up, the other people in the office down there, you know, I just don't think it's fair to ask them to keep consistently interrupting what they're doing, trying to, um... You know, get up... That's me. Well, not me, it's my phone. Constantly getting up.
I think the cavalry's coming.
You know, get up and help people that are there for the Inspection Services Department.
So I have a request for your request. I think you should submit it in writing. So if you get... Doesn't too much matter, but I would suggest you do a letter addressed to our personal director, personal director, Robin. And I would also, you certainly can copy me on it. I also would copy the summer chair of the Fincorn, who has joined Guido, not Karen Dowd. And I don't mind if it's a two cents letter and has that attached, but just, you know, this is us, so just be really clear in terms of the, both the hours, the two steps. One is you, one is Diane, and the timing of your request. So your...
And, um... Who's the chair?
John Guido, G-U-I-D-O. He's officially the summer chair.
Of Fincorn, right?
Of Fincorn, yes.
Yeah, Fincorn.
When were you looking to have this changed?
End of the year.
End of December?
The calendar year or the fiscal year?
Calendar year.
Okay, end of the calendar.
Yes, you should get it into the consideration process.
And going from 30 down to 18, so you don't think there'll be any impact losing 12 of your hours?
There won't be, there won't be any for what you guys see. You won't even, you wouldn't even, you won't see any difference other than you'll see my face more because I won't have to be somewhere else.
How many hours does Diane work?
Right now, currently, 24.
So Robin will have a chance. You're gonna do, as was requested.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Robin have a chance to look at all the things and give us some advice.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, my thing is, I just, I'm trying to plan for this and trying to make everything work. I really need to do it. There's some personal reasons I need to do it. But I, like I said, I don't have to work. I wanna work. When I retire, I can retire, but I wanna work. And I really want to stay in Topsfield. So hopefully, everybody agrees with what I'm trying to do. But I can promise you that you will not get complaints that I'm never here. You know, because I will be here, I will be, I will have the ability to be here more. I will have more office, more scheduled office hours here than I have the ability to do now, so...
Then there have been times, I know, when things have backed up and you said, you know, "I've got to do these inspections. I've gotta do these things." Do you foresee if you did go to 18 hours that the town might be in a position where we would be or at least be very well advised to hire some part-time help to fill in that extra time?
No, I don't see that happening.
Really? Okay.
I just don't see that happening with... We have potentially the 40B coming up.
Yeah.
But that's all controlled construction. So that's overseen by architects and engineers with minimal oversight from my department. It doesn't mean, I don't give up any inspections. Even when we went to, um... You know, having the hers ratings and the, you know, we changed the energy code. I don't, I don't have to go out there to do an insulation inspection because it's done by a third party and I get a report. If it's not done right, the report doesn't pass. Their house doesn't pass. They don't get their certificate of occupancy. But I don't give up any inspections. I wanna know, you know, I wanna know what's going on. I wanna know the quality of the work. I wanna, you know, because insulation companies hate me, for one thing. They absolutely hate me. They come back, they come back more times for Topsfield than for any town that I work in. They come back more times for me, I guarantee you, than they do for most people. Because I don't pass a lot of them first go around. Now I do because they know. Because they know.
Thank you for the suggestion. Thank you for helping the sign bylaw get into us and give it due consideration.
All right.
Trying to get you out of here.
Well, I appreciate that, but this is, you know, it's important stuff. And it's obviously, obviously gonna benefit me. But it's gonna be, in my opinion, a benefit to the town too. It's gonna benefit the inspection department. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna benefit financially even with an increase in Diane's wages. You're still, you know, it's still way ahead. Last year, we took in fiscal '19. We took in $180,147 on a $148,000 budget. So, you know, we consistently put money... We have, almost every, almost every year I've been here, we've put money back into the general fund at the end of the year. So I don't anticipate that that's gonna change.
Put it in a letter. We'll take it extremely seriously.
And Glenn, will you just be giving us a heads up when the letters are going out to the businesses?
I will do that. I will do that. But it'll be, because I wanna send them out together.
Yeah.
And I wanna address the blinky open signs and all that stuff. I still have to do the photos and isolate signs in the photos and that type of thing.
For a couple of weeks.
It'll be within the next two weeks, absolutely.
Excellent.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Have a good one.
Before we move on, I wanted to apologize profusely for not starting the meeting by welcoming our interim town administrator. It's because it feels like you've been here for years. All right, I feel better now. So we need to talk about the town administrator position and then try and guide the conversation in a couple of steps. So the first step is, I'm gonna look to my left to Lynn to talk about our next steps in, I hope, selecting a consultant. Is that the right word?
A search consultant.
A search consultant. And I think we have three cons... We have, I guess, one might say we have the primary decision of doing it. And then I think we have three other considerations. My question, what we need to...
So, um... What was it? Our last board meeting, right before that, we're being the eighth. The RFP to three different search firms went out, and their responses are due back to us on the 22nd by noon. So Donna will open them all at the same time, so... And she and I will review them, put together a recommendation for the board that night of which one we would recommend that we go with. But we will provide you with the three RFPs, so you'll be able to look over the three. So hopefully, we'll be able to take a vote and make a decision that night about which one that we would be going with.
Okay, so that is all that will be on the agenda today, right?
Starting on.
Okay. And you, I'm sure, talked to our purchasing, maybe specialist person? And are we, are we not? I think it's not obligated to go with a little bid or anything like that.
We are not obligated to go with a little bid. There are other things that we can take into consideration.
Any other constraints? We're allowed to consider who we believe will do the best job.
Yes. And there's a lot of information that they're providing that will give us multiple checkpoints besides the price as to what they provide for us in services, what they have done in the past, their success rate, et cetera.
Great. I believe the next step is a decision to have a search committee. Does everybody have this?
Yes.
We got it, yeah.
I think we've got everybody.
Yes, yeah.
I don't need to get immersed in it tonight, but I wanna make you get this done.
I think I must have.
If you don't, please. It's real helpful. Kate Mularas often does a very nice synopsis on a particular issue. So the first point is, I'm sure we're all on the same page, but just to be absolutely clear, that, like in the words, the search committee and preliminary screening committee are used interchangeably. So again, maybe state the obvious. It's this board that will make a decision who to hire as a town administrator. This is intended as a group representing various components of the town who will follow Kate's... I work with the consultant, number one, so...